Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 8th Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. Welcome. I want to make a few quick announcements before we get started. We have a full agenda this evening, but a few things I'd like to call your attention to, just first of all, if you don't mind, if you have a cellphone on, if you wouldn't mind putting that on silent, or if you have to take an important call, if you wouldn't mind doing so outside of the room, we'd appreciate it. Tonight is the first legislative session that Councilman Jack Heath is with us, so I want to say welcome to Mr. Heath.[41.14][41.14](APPLAUSE). And although we've now all been working together for over a week, I want to say congratulations and welcome to the team. This evening, we will have the city invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance, and the invocation will be led by Imam Ashraf Ahmed from the Del Marva Muslim Community. Imam?
Our Lord, we ask you, we beg you, to give peace to the people of this community, bring their hearts together in love, bless this community and the whole nation. We ask you to give wisdom to the people of this council, show them the right way, help them with the plans to serve their people and the whole nation. Amen.
Thank you. Stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have some additional very special guests this evening, and thank you again, Imam. I would like to call forward the members of the Youth Civics Council and Ms. Brittany Goff, the coordinator of the Youth Civics Council. Would you mind coming in and joining us? However you want to do it, Brittany. And Mayor?
You want to go there?
Yes.
Actually, we'll probably just call them in by name and then they'll go around the back.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, the group that we have joining us is a group of young leaders, a group we've gotten to know over the last year, an incredible group of people from throughout our community, middle school and high school students from both private and public schools, from inside Salisbury and outside Salisbury, all of whom are dedicated to service in our community. This is the Salisbury Youth Civics Council, a program that we started this year, that the mayor and council started this year, to engage our young people in public service and in analyzing challenges that we have as a community and finding civic engagement methods of resolving them. They've been learning about our city, they've been learning about our government, and they've been designing solutions to some of the challenges we have. They have come to council over the past few weeks, past few months, and proposed some of those solutions to us. They've talked to us about everything from resolving some traffic issues downtown, to addressing teen suicide, to addressing challenges such as community spirit and involvement through marathons or 5Ks, programs like that. It's really been uplifting. I think more than anything else, it's a reminder to us that when we invest in our young people, when we invest in the future leaders of Salisbury, and give them reason to believe that Salisbury cares enough about them, that they can come back and then serve this community. So, I want to say thank you to all of you. I want to say thank you to Brittany Goff, our first coordinator of the Salisbury Youth Civics Council. You've done an incredible job. You have really developed an incredible program. I remember the first day we met, and you had a binder already this big, designed, I didn't know where you got it from. I assumed you had just downloaded or printed a bunch of paper, but you had already designed the program, and it was really just fantastic, because it was just an idea for us, and you turned it into a reality. You turned it into something. And you gave these young people a voice and an opportunity, and then because they're such incredible people, they stepped up and have designed solutions to some of our challenges. I look forward to this program evolving next year. We have the continued support of AmeriCorps, and we are so grateful to ShoreCorps. Thank you, Dr. Whitehead. We are so grateful to your support, allowing us to hire talent like Brittany, and we're incredibly excited about next year, when Wycomico County will join us in sharing the costs, and it's going to be the Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council, so we're super excited about that. Yeah, absolutely.
Let me just add to the council president very quickly. A few years back, Dr. Whitehead and so many people in our community were instrumental in Salisbury being named an All-America City, and Dr. Whitehead has also been instrumental in Wycomico County being named one of the top 100 places in America to raise a child over the last several years. Dr. Whitehead's commitment to Salisbury and our young people goes all the way back to Salisbury's promise back in the early 1990s with council president Carolyn Hall and many other people in the community, and this is one of the things that Dr. Whitehead has said that we should always have been doing. And with the leadership of the council president, we have been able to get it done and funded, and we are excited for this group of people. The council president and I, last Friday night, on our Friday night, we went to the 100th anniversary of the Salvation Army. We were there with Councilman Spies and Councilwoman Mitchell, the 100th anniversary of the Salvation Army here in Salisbury, and we looked around the room at all of the people that were in that room of ages from 90 to, what do you mean?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, 90 to 32, and I fall somewhere in that range. All of the leaders that someplace like the Salvation Army and the work that they do with children can produce for our city. This is one of those ideas that is going to bring things back to our community. These young people, we're going to do everything we do, as the council president says, to reduce the brain drain, so that great minds and great intellect and great drive doesn't leave us. So, we're happy to present these certificates of appreciation in recognition of service and contributions as a member of the Youth Civics Council during the 2013-2014 session. These certificates are issued in appreciation there by the mayor and the city council on behalf of the citizens of Salisbury dated this 8th day of September 2014. They're signed by myself and by the council president. So, we're going to call you up. If you'll come this way, grab it, and if we need to take a picture, and then you're going to go shake the other council member's hand, and then we'll get a big picture. So, Cambria Jones, the first name I call is the one that is not here. There we go. I went out and counted, right? I went out and counted. Kelly Dean? Stephanie Rimmer? Six and two. Aaron Davis?[555.32][555.32](APPLAUSE). We did have Isaiah Camper, who was one of our Youth Civics Council members, and let me just say to Brittany, on behalf of all the staff that you got to work with every day in the mayor's office, working in our side room, we did appreciate you being here and all the work that you did, and especially a thank you from Mr. Stevenson, who helped you, and you helped him in many ways. So, let's give a large round of appreciation for Brittany Goff, who was our coordinator.[626.82][626.82](APPLAUSE). Got it? Pulled your things up? I put those in there, you know? All right. He's got them all. About to see us? You want to see us?
Well, I hope you all won't go far, because I'm sure, I'm quite sure, in that crowd we have future mayor, council president, council members in that crowd, so be prepared to take over soon. That brings us to another community organization presentation we have this evening, so I'm going to invite Kathleen Momey from United Way to come forward and make a presentation this evening.
I've got some handouts for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think I just didn't have enough. And the last will be first.
Well, thank you for having me here, and the invitation actually came on Friday to be here, and that was because Councilwoman Laura Mitchell was at our kickoff for our 70th United Way of the Lower Eastern Shore Campaign at Salisbury University on Friday morning at 8:00, along with a small group of about 267 others, community leaders, agencies, and it was just an incredible event. And I must say that I was very touched when Laura came up to me after the meeting and said, "Kathleen, I would very much like to start something and try to work with my fellow council members to see what we can do to support the local United Way." And we had our speakers for the day, number one, it was our 10th Annual CEO Breakfast, hosted by Mr. Jim Perdue, a very strong supporter, that I'm humbled to have him behind us, as well as Dr. Mark Adney, a physician who, for the first time last year, came to our CEO Breakfast, and this year he spoke, because last year he was so inspired to see what we were doing, that he decided that he needed to reach out to the doctors in the community, and he started what he called the Hundred Docs Campaign, asking 100 different physicians to give $1,000 a year to support this effort. Good news is, for the first year, he raised $48,000 in one year, and he said, and already another United Way, we're all separate, there's 1,400 of us across the country, but another United Way, and Selina, Kansas saw what was going on, and they have now started a Hundred Docs Campaign in Selina, Kansas. So, lots of great things start in our community, and that's because we have a lot of great leaders. And additionally, Mr. Scott Delaney, the CEO of Jubilant Cadista, was one of our keynote speakers, because when he, as many of you may know, an incredible pharmaceutical company in our midst, they started a campaign two years ago, and in their first campaign, they raised $26,000 for our local United Way, and that was when they had 200 and some employees, and they are on their way to 600 employees soon. So, yes, our campaign is more than just a campaign, it is the one time that we bring the entire community together, government, businesses, nonprofits, and say, "Will you offer this opportunity for your employees to give to our local United Way, even if it's $1 a week out of your paycheck? That would be $52, and let me tell you, that could be eight meals for someone on the Meals on Wheels program." We, right now, are the largest funder of local nonprofit programs outside of government. Love government, but, you know, as we know, you can't do it all with the local programs and the needs that we have. This is 70 years for the local United Way, with all the dollars we raise staying right here locally. It doesn't go to some other big United Way, it all stays here. We have a Village of Hope that we fund. There's not a Village of Hope in Arkansas. There's a lot of very unique things, and we look and study those needs every year, thanks to hundreds of volunteers. I am one of seven staff members for the United Way of the Lower Eastern Shore, covering Worcester, Wycomico, Somerset, and Dorchester. We just happen to be housed right here at Salisbury, and I cannot wait to invite you, because we're planning an open house. We are so delighted. We have just been provided, thanks to Gillis Gilkerson and E.S. Atkins, an incredible new home, where the quality staffing services used to be, just incredible. So, we will be having an open house to show what they have donated and helped us with. But I do also, in addition to being here to let you know a little bit about our United Way and what we're doing, our goal this year, you know, we said, "What are we going to do with our goal?" It was $1.6 million last year, and we surpassed it. There's not many groups raising $1.6 million, and it's all staying right here in this community. We are determined that we are going to surpass that again. We're keeping at 1.6, but I can tell you, our eyes are really on 1.7, if not higher. And from what I'm seeing and what I saw on Friday, and the energy from the community leaders, it really was amazing to see the energy of people saying, "We need to just step up and be involved, and if we all get together, it does make a huge difference." As the council members and staff, I so encourage you, we need your support for the employee campaign here with the city of Salisbury. You have in your packets the history, and I know times have been tough, but we, last year, did hit probably one of the lowest levels, and I think, I don't know where that stands, but Town of Ocean City and some of the other municipalities, even though, oh gosh, we don't want to talk about 2008 to 2010, where everyone, companies alike, were taking downturns, but if there's anything you can do to support us, to go out to do some of the presentations, and to say this is important as a community that we stand behind, we are not high-pressure at all. We don't want anyone to have departmental goals of 100%, because we don't want anyone to feel that kind of pressure. We want people to give because they want to, and that they see the good work that's being done. I wish I could say the needs aren't greater, but I can tell you, and I know I'm speaking to the choir, when you look at human needs, we need more mentors in our community. Big brothers, big sisters are making a huge difference. We have a program called Imagination Library we've implemented. In two years, we've distributed 26,000 books from children from birth to five years old that's mailed to their home. The statistics show that children in this program, when they enter kindergarten, their grades are higher than a child who's not in that program, all because they got a book delivered to their house that said, you know, it was the little engine that could. I mean, they're nice books. We are doing the same in all four counties and tracking what those grades are going to be. We can't ask the schools for the names of the children, but we let them know who's enrolled, and they tell us the scores. So, we are very conscious about our own key performance indicators. I know that sounds like a business term, but nonprofits have to do the same thing, if we're going to be able to show that we are making a difference and changing people's lives. I encourage you to help us in any way you can, in addition to the employee campaigns at your own places of business, as well as here within the city. And I know things are always, you know, in a way, you know, the government should be a nonprofit too, you know? I know, you're stretched to the limit as far as resources to help others, but there's other ways as well. It is so humbling, we have so many companies who just wrap their arms around us. Pepsi Bottling Ventures here in Salisbury, I don't think there's any other soda company, period, but Pepsi Bottling Ventures has been behind this community in so many ways, and they have now said, "What can we do besides," they already have a $34,000 employee campaign that gives back to our United Way, "they have now created Pepsi panels mimicking what they did in North Carolina for the Jimmy Valvano Foundation. They did it one by one, where eight cents for a dollar Pepsi, eight cents of every soda, went back to the Jimmy V Foundation, and Mike Langley said, 'Let's do that for our local United Way.'" In two years, they were just doing it one company at a time, just wherever the salesperson went, they raised $30,000. We talked about, that eight cents adds up. If any of you have a Pepsi machine, please, there's the baruchures here on the back, called Daryl, he'd be more than happy to talk to you about replacing your machine, and it says, you know, on the front panel, "Helping United Way in our local community." As well, we have, I would like to challenge the council, a very fun challenge, Jubilant Cadista, to go outside the box and do something this year too, besides Pepsi, they are having the first annual cornament. Yes, it's a cornhole tournament at Purdue Stadium on September 26th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., teams of two for $50. You could be saying Jake Day and their Irtan are the winners of the first annual cornament in Salisbury. Wouldn't that be fun headline? It would be good. It's a lot of what, they have already raised, I think, $12,000 in sponsorships, yes?
You've never seen me play cornhole.
Oh, okay.[1289.58][1289.58](LAUGHTER).
Our fire department's pretty good, though.
The mayor might win. I don't, I'm sorry.
I get, it's just one of those, a lot of great companies in our midst doing so many fun things, and we just invite you to be a part of that. My dream is that hopefully the city of Salisbury will be a part of our Top 25 one day, and in your packet also, in addition to, if anyone's happy about the games yesterday, is your wallet football schedule, so that you can look at all the games. I did not highlight my team, the Redskins, which is really difficult to say. But anyway, that's for your pockets. In there is also your pledge form. I don't think we've ever, you know, the number one reason people don't give is because they're not asked to be a part of this incredible community-wide event. So, tonight, it's my honor, on behalf of our board of directors, and more importantly, the 70,000 people on our Lower Eastern Shore who helped every year, for you all to also participate and be a part of this great team. With that, I take any questions, and just appreciate the invitation, Laura, and for your being so supportive and representing the city at our events. It is well noted, and it really does mean a lot to our United Way.
Thank you. And I did ask, after having heard that on Friday, that the number one reason people don't give is that they're not asked, I did ask, I asked all of our council members and our mayor, and every elected official of the city of Salisbury is very proud to say that we are, tonight signing our forms to enroll and have payroll deduction, donation go to the United Way.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. What a way to start it off. Thank you very much.
Well, Kathleen, I think it's serendipitous that our county council president is here, so the challenge, Matt.[1398.83][1398.83](LAUGHTER). The ball is in your court.
I'm challenging every elected official on the lower shore.
I think he didn't even pause before he said, "Accept it."
I think, yeah.
And considering you make twice as much as we do.[1411.15][1411.15](LAUGHTER).
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Twice not very much is still not very much.
You don't want to compare the mayor and the county executives.[1424.83][1424.83](LAUGHTER).
Kathleen, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for everything that the United Way does in this community and the great organizations that you're supporting.
Thank you. Thank you.[1436.01][1436.01](APPLAUSE).
You know, and on that high note, I'll, thank you, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented for this evening.
Salute.
All right. I would like to remove an item from the legislative agenda.
Okay.
That is, for public hearing this evening, we have Charter Amendment Number 2443, election redistricting. Four months ago, we, actually, I asked for some maps from the city and to give people a better idea of what they would be voting for, or what the districting would be looking like on paper. We have not received those maps. There's a map over there that looks like some three helpings of badly scrambled eggs. The map that was the previously, previous districting plan, which was the revised one with two districts, was taken down by the day administration before the meeting. So, this is a public hearing, so what does the public have to compare with this map? And the answer is, nothing. So, we are not prepared, even though we, you know, we said that we would bring this before council this evening, we are not prepared to do so. And I think that those are stumbling blocks for the public. I think that are actually some people here that would be disenfranchised. I think whole neighborhoods would be disenfranchised by not having the information in front of them. So, that is my request.
I'd like to offer, I see Mr. Stevenson, I'd like to offer the administrative opportunity to respond.
Mr. McKenzie is going to be providing a copy of the map showing the two districts on, by way of PowerPoint during the discussion.
Okay. Are there other maps that are going to be shown during, through PowerPoint during discussion?
The existing two districts and the proposed five.
Okay.
The maps that I asked for, which give us an idea of what the density of population is with rental versus homeowner, that I asked for over four months ago, is not here, and that, I'm told, was canceled by the administration. The mayor told someone not to do it, so, well. Do I get to respond, or are we going to continue?
Yes, Mr. [INAUDIBLE].
There's a motion on the floor without a second.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you're right. Before we discuss any further, is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies. All right, are there any other amendments to the legislative agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of the legislative agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, the motion is approved, legislative agenda is adopted. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Salute.
All right, Ms. Nichols?
Good evening. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight, August 11th, 2014, regular meeting minutes, and the August 18th, 2014 work session minutes, and that would be it.
All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. All right, the next item on our agenda is the public hearing and charter amendment for resolution number 2443. I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2443.
Salute.
Second?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, no, I don't, actually, so I undo that second.
Okay, is there, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell?
Got my numbers.
Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you. I'll give Mr. McKenzie just a minute to...
Yeah, we will, we'll be doing the presentation, and then we'll do the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Mr. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to do?
Just, I want to take a quick moment to thank Mr. McKenzie. We've been at this since sometime in 2011, coming up with this particular plan. I want to thank this council for bringing this particular plan back in front of the public. I do want to apologize to Mr. Spies publicly. I really thought that this, that this map that I have up here on the left-hand side, though probably not large enough, was what we were looking for. I did not expect staff to go back and start over again from scratch with the amount of information that it was taking to get it. It does show the rental properties density in the city. The other two maps, yes, they do look like scrambled eggs, but they do actually have some things on them, so it is my sincere apology that this is not the map that Mr. Spies wanted. This was a map that did have the rental density on it, and I did not think going back from scratch and asking staff to start all over again was the correct thing to do. So, my apologies to him, my thank you to Mr. McKenzie for his work getting us here, and my thanks to the council for bringing this to public hearing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Deck.
Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you. I'll go ahead while Mr. McKenzie's getting everything warmed up here. Resolution 2443 is a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that will amend Salisbury City Charter in the following areas, SC 1-20, SC 2-2, and SC 6-15. For the following reasons, these amendments will be made. The intent is to create five new election districts to replace... The intent is to create five new election districts to replace the existing two election districts. And to provide that as of the general election of November 15th, one council member should be elected from each of those districts. SC-1-20 establishes District One and District Two for electing members of the city, to the Salisbury City Council. And it requires that two members will be selected from District One and three members from District Two. According to census data and boundaries that were, have been established, and using that information from 2010, the 2010 census, Mr. McKenzie has prepared the following districts. The meets and bounds or the description for those districts are included as part of the packet. The five new districts will replace the two existing council districts. And beginning in the general election of 2015, the mayor and all five council members shall be elected on the first Tuesday of November 15th, and shall hold that office for a term of four years until their successors are duly elected. Again, this resolution will create five election districts, beginning on the first Tuesday of November 15th, establishing five districts classified as District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, and District Five. The resolution goes on to articulate those changes throughout the code. Again, SC-1-20. Those are the meets and bounds or the description. SC-2-2, the qualifications for election. And SC-6-15, that speaks to tie in an election. That concludes the staff briefing. That's where we are. Mr. McKenzie, if you wanted to give us an overview of how you delineated those districts and arrived at those conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. There is a long history with this, and a lot of you have been through this, sometimes it's the first time you've been through this. I don't want to bore you with a lot of details from, you know, how election maps are drawn, but I will give you a short overview of how the districts are to be designed with a few parameters. Initially, after the 2010 census, you have to reevaluate the growth of the city of Salisbury to determine if the lines and the population is such that you need to adjust your population and district lines. It was determined, due to the exceptional growth in Salisbury, that, yes, the current boundaries with the two district plan were insufficient. In addition to that, Mayor Irtin considered that there's a large increase in minority population. That includes black, as well as Hispanic and other races. That warranted the city consider an additional minority district. So where we ended up was, there are five districts of near equal population. The total population for the city Salisbury is 30,607 people. The average population of a district should be 6,121 people. So the goal was to look for pockets of minority population within two districts, where the population of those districts would be a higher minority concentration than white population. So we ended up with, in this case, District One and District Two. And as you can see here, and I'll zoom out in orange. This is near the shape of the previous District One. This is west Salisbury here, where you see Fitzwater Street, Pemberton Hall Apartments, Pemberton Apartments? Down through the city of Salisbury, Ohio Avenue, Florida Avenue, Wyler Street. A lot of these areas have greater than 50% minority population. It was also recognized that there's another area in the city that you see in yellow, which is District Two. So here again, we looked for concentrations of minority population and kind of stitched all these blocks together. So in the end, we ended up with five districts. And I'm going to zoom out just a little bit more. District One has a population of 6,028 people. Now, the ideal was 6,121 people. So we had a deviation, we were 93 people short in that population. Now, the redistricting laws allow you a 5% deviation above or below your target threshold. So anything, if you see in this column here that's below five, plus or minus, meets the requirements of the redistricting law. So as you can see, District One is 1.52% below the deviation. The white population is 2,249, adjusted black, 3,258, for a percentage black of 54.05%. District Two, which you can see in the yellow map over there, the paper map, and it's tired. Total population, 6,003, deviation of minus 118 people. The deviation's of minus 1.492. Adjusted white is 2,0242, black is 3,076, for a percent black is 51.24. So the goal in this percent black is to be above 50%. As you can see, both of these districts have achieved that goal.
Mr. Day, if I could just also interject, because when we did this, this is data and this is numbers. These maps represent neighborhoods as well. And as you can see in District Two, which is the second minority district, you do run from Doverdale into Church Street, through the park, across and into Princeton Homes as well. The thing that I want to make sure, and I don't, and I don't know whether or not Frank was going to tell you this, but this isn't just a matter of, let's throw this against the wall and see if these numbers work. There are federal and state laws that go into doing these things, to making these lines. You cannot run across roadbed. Subsequently, if you look down on Pemberton Drive, parts of District Three are attached across the river from one another, but not right up the street from one another, because the state of Maryland will not allow you to go up a roadbed in order to connect voters in different parts of the city, because you have a swath of the county that sits right in between the Heritage, and then comes, and then, and you don't reach again until you get out to Sleepy Hollow. So you can't, those two things can't touch. This is what I've gotten from people in the public is, why am I here and this is over there? Well, that's because it's not legal for me to touch, let's say, Sleepy Hollow and the Heritage. Same thing, if you look over in District Two, I hate to say it this way, but sometimes if you squint, this does exactly what it's supposed to do. It's only when you have to get, like, put on bifocals and turn them upside down does it look like gerrymandering. But we took District Two and made that sort of the center-east section of the city. It is neither our fault, your fault, or Mr. McKenzie's fault that those doughnut hole areas that sit there in between District Five and District Two were there. Those are just places where residents or developers chose not to annex into the city. But it is a clear straight shot from the top of District Two to the bottom of District Two. It just so happens that you will have to go in and out of the county a couple times if you're on one of the roads to get there. But I would say to you that there's no place that we don't go in Salisbury, that we don't go in and out of the county several times. So I don't mean to interrupt Mr. McKenzie, but I do think it's important to recognize that you couldn't go across Naylor Mill Road, you couldn't go down Pemberton Drive, you couldn't go up the northeast Collector Road and collect things, because that is not legal in the state of Maryland. You can, however, go across water, and that's what made most of this possible, is that you could go across water. The county council president is here, District One, my house now, and District One in the county, because you could come across Johnson's Lake and redistrict over to Division Street. Fine with me, I don't have a problem with that, that's fine. I have a great, I have a great representative. But that's one of the, one of the things that you can do is go across water. Frank, thank you for the time. I just wanted to make sure we made that clear.
Well, we explained District One and District Two. Now, District Three, the goal there was to meet the population regardless of racial characteristics. Now, in this case, you know, we try to keep neighborhoods together as well. As you can see, District Three, on the map, which is the green area, it's kind of the Harbor Point area, Pinehurst area, and then down there on South Division Street, Tony Tank Village. That district has a total population of 6,347, a deviation of 226 above the ideal population. That deviation's 3.69%, so that's within our 5% goal. And the adjusted white and black, where as you can see, but they are not part of the requirements for meeting racial characteristics. District Four, 5,895, deviation of minus 226. Here, you're minus 3.69% below the ideal. As you can see, in District Four, on this map is blue, it comes around Newtown area, downtown area, east of, around the city park, up through Newtown and.
Johnson's Lake, Sutter Point, Emerson Avenue, and then all the way up to the mall to Runaway Bay and to a huge swath of city land that has been annexed in by landowners but isn't developed, which is the top of the map, which is almost in Delmar.
So as you can see on this map here. Runaway Bay and all those developments are all in the city.
That would be the northernmost residence, Frank, the villages at Avalon. Troopers Way, up off Dag's Borough Road.
And finally, District Five, which is the orange district, which is east Salisbury. Total population, 6,334, a deviation of 213 above our target. That deviation's 3.4% above, well below our 5% allowance. Adjusted white, 4,105, black, 1635, and percent black, 2581. Now, for a point of clarification, when we first started working on the maps for the mayor, part of our due diligence is to review the boundaries, look for any imperfections, clean up areas where there are inconsistencies between the census data and our corporate limits. So that has been done since the mayor's initial map was prepared. And like in the initial map, I'll show you real quickly. This is the original one that was prepared by the mayor. You can see this annexation here, picks up Westwood. This was annexed into the city by the roadbed of, I think this is Jersey Road?
Jersey, Naylor, Jersey.
But you can see, the Census Bureau did not know that this area was connected by this road to the city. So in the map that we have worked on, you see, we have drawn this incorrectly. Now, there's no population in here. It didn't affect anything, other than it made the map correct. There was one area, we discovered, that when the data was developed by the Census Bureau, they developed the data and they created the initial block maps. So each of these blocks that you see contains information about the population characteristics of the people that live within there. One thing they did, and it's baffling to everyone who's dealing with this data, is for some reason, they started drawing in circular driveways, and they assigned data to those little driveways. So all these things here, in some cases, there might be a house in that driveway, in some cases, not. But those things can create a little bit of a headache for us to track, because there's so many of them and they're so small. Well, one of them, we found out, was along a boundary that the mayor had proposed in the city. And I'm going to pull back up this one. And this is an area over near Pris Street Elementary. And if you look right there, you can't see it. But if you zoom in real close.
There it is.
Here's a circular driveway right here, a few people in it.
Yep.
And so what we did, we cleaned this up, it'd be a lot better product for the Board of Elections to work with, rather than telling somebody, you know, where your house is in the wrong spots, you're in the wrong district. We have adjusted, corrected the map to remove that area and move that from District Two into District One. Now, they did have a slight adjustment of three people from one district to another. It made a difference that's hardly noticeable, but I can read this to you, or I can show you a map here. This top area. This is the original map from the mayor, which was entitled Plans One and Two. As you can see, District One had a population of 6,025. Now, District One is going to have a population of 6,028. That reflects the three people moved. Percentage black was 54.06, it went down 1%, or 100s of 1%. To 54.05. District Two was 6,006 people, the deviation of 115, it's now 6,003. That reflects the three people that were moved. District Two population now will be a percent black, 51.24, where it was 51.23. So I just wanted to show that going through this details with a fine-toothed comb, we think we've called them all. Working with the surveyor, we worked with the mayor and part of planning to develop the boundaries of these things. The surveyor made some comments about some things that need to clean up with the boundary, and those things were also done. But none of those affected any of the population statistics or district.
Frank, let me do this for the, for the benefit of some of the media people who maybe not born yet, but our census numbers now tell us that we are 34% African-American, 7% Latino, and 3% Asian in our city, which has brought about this necessity to do this map differently. So I know we talked about that back in 2011 and 2012, but I don't think any of you were here, so I thought it would be a good idea if you could include that as, you know, one of the reasons why a map that reflects what the population is today. Not looking for any minority in particular, but to be able to have a second African-American or the first Haitian Creole. These districts, especially District One, which encompasses much of what District One is now. Shaney will tell you, Shaney comes across the river and comes into North Camden and goes all the way down to, I think, North Boulevard now is where you, the one side of north, maybe. So much of District One is familiar. It does come across now and go into Princeton Homes. This connects and goes up to many of our Haitian Creole neighborhoods that are along Priscilla Street, parts of that, parts of the city that have near Doverdale Playground. These are the necessities that we see in terms of what our city will look like in another 10 years, or another 20 years, or another 30 years. Trying to be ready for that, to be progressive and to be, to be prepared for it. So again, I appreciate the time, Mr. Council President.
So unless you have anything else?
I have nothing further left, or questions for me.
I'd like you to stay, but before I do anything, before we do anything else, what I'd like to do now is open it up, open the public hearing, in case there are any comments from the general public. So with that, if there's anyone here. So with that, if there's anyone here who would like to be sworn in and make comments for the public hearing, please rise so that you can be sworn in.
Kay Gibson, resident of Salisbury. I want to thank everyone for the amount of work that's gone into this. It's been a couple of years and it's not going to please everyone. And yes, it looks like scrambled eggs, and I look at my district and go, my God! But what it does do by splitting it up into five areas is to encourage people in Salisbury to get involved, to elect representatives that will bring the neighborhood issues to the forefront. We need involvement. We don't have involvement. We have a lot of people complaining. I'm going to, I complain, but at least I come here and say it. But I want more involvement. I want more citizens' involvement. Maybe if you elect a representative that represents the issues in your neighborhood, you'll come, you'll support them, you'll have something to say. We need citizens' input. Not everybody wants to sit up there. It's a heck of a job. No, thank you. But we need you to come and voice your opinion, and maybe this will help. Whether I, yes, it looks like scrambled eggs, and everybody can argue about one street or another. I don't think that's what's important. I think what's important is increased citizen involvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Is there anyone else? No? Okay. Well, I will open it up to questions and comments from my colleagues, but I do just want to say it doesn't look like any scrambled eggs I want to eat.
Actually, that's pretty good considering some of the stuff they do on the federal level.
That's a wonderful point. All right, comments, questions?
I just wanted to say that I thank Frank for doing this. I think this is even a better explanation, this trip around, than the previous maps. And I got to say this, I appreciate my friend, Ms. Gibson. Just shocked me tonight. I just got to say that. And that's one of the reasons why I support this, is better representation around the whole city of Salisbury. And hopefully, as Ms. Gibson has said, that it would give an opportunity to people to get more involved and get out to vote and exercise their rights that people have died for, and get other candidates to run in these districts. Now, that's one of the purposes that I supported it for. And like the mayor said, we have a growing, other minorities that I like to see sit behind this, that's Hispanics, Asians, Indians, Haitian Creole populations growing rapidly, and give them opportunities to represent their culture and their people. And again, Ms. Gibson, I thank you for your support.
Other comments?
I've supported this plan from the beginning, the five district plan. I am very glad that this came back, and I hope that this will quickly get sent to the courts and move through. It has the support of the NAACP and the ACLU and the majority of council, I believe, now. And I'm very hopeful, as Ms. Gibson said, that this will encourage more involvement. Knowing that you can walk down the street and see your representative and not have to get in your car and drive across town to get to a representative, I think will help. I think that more people will get involved. Hopefully, it will also seem a little less daunting to those who may want to sit up here and have as much fun as we do. It's a little less daunting to look, although I was looking hard at District Five last night, and it's still a lot of walking, but it's less than it was before. So I am very hopeful that this will bring more involvement, but also more fair voting activity for everyone, because everyone will get one vote for the mayor and one vote for their council member in a single-member district. And I think that's just the most fair way that we can do this. Thank you.
Anything else?
I look at this map and I think to myself that District One, the way it is here, is not so much different from the way District One is now. It's a bit expanded, a little bit squeaked out there in some areas down into the southeast. I suspect that indeed, instead of having a desired effect, which is to have an increased opportunity for African Americans, which are the recognized, who are the recognized minority in terms of the court case that mandated this change, I feel that they're going to be indeed disenfranchised. I think that District One will remain to have an African American representative on the city council. However, the remaining districts will be overwhelmed by the money that non-African Americans put into whoever, whatever candidate they decide to put up. I think that we will perennially see four white faces here with one black face. I don't think that's going to change because of this. I think that the previous map that we, Mr. McKenzie had come up with, which enlarged District One and reduced the size of District Two and left two districts, but reduced the numbers of representatives from District Two, the non-minority district, down to three, and gave an additional member to the minority district, making it two automatic black faces and three usually white faces on this council. And I mean that in only the most concrete of terms. I'm not trying to insult anyone. I think that the black community and the minority community is being done a disservice by this. And I don't think that the city has, from neighborhood to neighborhood, any concerns or any major concerns that are not addressed by this council. It is easy to pick up the phone, you know, in the time, the entire time I've been on council, no one has gotten in their car and driven over to my house. And I think that's mostly the same with most of the other council members. Telephones, emails, text messages, that's the way we communicate these days. We don't come over and knock on somebody's door much anymore. I think that this, again, that this is a mistake, but it's going to be a grand experiment, and we'll see how the names turn out as candidates round about next July or August. And I want to give you all warning, I want everyone in the city who is a voter, or even a non-voter, to watch the contribution lists, see where the money comes from. I fear that some of the money can be given by special interests, just as it has for the last 15 years that I've seen council in operation and paid close attention to it. You will see money coming from special interests, and I won't name those special interests right here, I think I know who I mean. And they will put up council candidates, just as they have for these past 12 years, who have never been to a council meeting, who don't know diddly about the budget, who really haven't done anything in the way of community service, and sometimes don't even have the time to come to a council meeting if they were elected. So again, I leave you with this grand experiment, and I know that this term will be my last because Councilman Heath, Councilman Day, and myself all live in one district according to this new map. So if I were to go up against Councilman Day, done deal, Councilman Day is coming back. Chances are, Councilman Heath will come back as well, and I will retire into obscurity. But that doesn't matter to me so much. What matters to me is the future of this city. So keep an eye out. Make sure that you're not being pulled by the nose by somebody who has a special interest in getting land, in getting changes in our ordinances, to try to make it easier or more lucrative for those special interests. Keep an eye out. Thank you.
Yes, interesting first meeting for myself. I think that the way that I am going to be, I'm going to be supporting this. I think our job is really to afford the people an equal opportunity to be elected. We have no crystal balls. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. I think that we have to make sure that those people that want to run and want to represent the people in their district get that opportunity to do that. Beyond that, I have no control over who's giving what to whom. But I think if you have a reasonable platform and you're a reasonable human being that can work with others, then you can get elected no matter what your population and your district are. So having said that, thank you.
I think, you know, this is technically a political body. We are a political body, right? But I think we have operated very much apolitically for a while, and I think as a community, we are at our best when we operate apolitically. But I will relay a story or recount a story that I've shared from this seat once before when we've discussed this matter, and that's the very first question at the very first forum, when I decided I was going to run for this seat, Mr. Heath and I were both asked this question, was at the NAACP forum, and the question was simply, you know, given the changing demographics in our community, would you support a plan that created five or seven districts so that there could be individual representatives from a smaller geographic area throughout our city? And I hadn't given it much thought because it wasn't something that, you know, really truly mattered to me in terms of the ongoing debate about that issue. But the gut reaction and the quick answer was, and remains, absolutely. Morally, I think it's the right thing to do because you are giving people a greater chance of being elected to serve their community from their neighborhood, and a greater chance to access their elected official and their representative. I agree with Mr. Speeds that most people reach out through phone, email, text, Facebook, whatever, Twitter these days. But at the end of the day, we do represent geography. We represent people based on where they live. That's true in a city, that's true in a county, that's true in our congressional representatives, that's true in our state representatives. So I think those things can't be ignored. I also think that when I look at the composition of the candidates who raised their hand for, to fill Ms. Cohen's seat, I saw 12 people committed to their community, none of whom represented special interests as far as I could tell, all of whom wanted to give everything they could, and as a body represented diversity and represented a far larger group than has ever raised their hand for public office in Salisbury before. 12 people wanted to sit on this council. And from all but District Four. That's right. So Districts One, Two, Three, and Five are all represented. You know, again, we are a political body, and thus, you know, politics are ever-present even when we don't want them to be. You know, there are three people, as you said, three people, the three of us, that would have to run for the same seat, and still I support this regardless. And I know that may mean the end of my short political career. I fully acknowledge that, and I think that's, it's still worthy for the larger purpose. I think we are in a position right now that is unenviable. We are making a decision about political boundaries that we'll all have to deal with. And I think if I could make a recommendation for the future, that we get this out of the hands of the city council. And I'd love to see some sort of independent commission on redistricting, you know, after every census. I'd love for that to not be the job of city council members. We can, sure, we can vote on it at the end as we have to to change our charter, but I'd love for an independent commission to be there helping staff to lay out those boundaries. Again, at the end of the day, this to me is a moral decision. I'm prepared to vote. Yes?
I'd just like to let the public know that I don't like text messages. I don't like email. As in, no, I don't answer, I look at it, you know, every now and then. I do meet people, they do come to my house, I do my office, everybody knows where my office is. So if anybody needs to, I like to talk to flesh and blood, to see, look at eye contact, body language. I think email and texting is very impersonal, just my personal opinion. But I think that we are servants of the people, and I think we're servants for all the people of City of Salisbury, irregardless of what district we come from. And I think, I think we do, I think everyone back here does that. But I just want people to know I don't text too much, and I don't like email, like to talk to the person so I can see them. That's all. And I am going to look for this.
Well, after nine public hearings and just over three years, I will call the question. And with the public hearing closed, all those in favor of Resolution 2443, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the motion passes. Next on our agenda is Resolution Number 2444. This is to write off certain fees and liens for the property acquired by Salisbury Fire Company Two in order to build the new fire station two. First, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2444.
Second.
Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'll be brief. Resolution 2444 is being provided at the request of Mr. Corddry, the Director of Internal Services. The council met in a previous legislative session and decided that it would write off the fees in the amount of $25,951.12 for the purpose of the Salisbury Volunteer Fire Department acquiring property at 413 Naylor Street. And Mr. Corddry said, well, that's all good and well, Mr. Stevenson, that the council approved it, but I'm going to need something come audit time. So we're simply asking you to approve this by way of resolution, something that we've already done. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one request for a public comment. Ms. Gibson?
I thought I was going to bat two for two with you tonight.
Before we have, before we have public comment, can I?
Too much Irish.
Yes, Ms. Gibson, hold on one moment.
Let me ask one question, Mr. Stevenson, before, just for the public's knowledge, those are $25,000 and a little change of liens. Could you tell the public what the liens were for?
The lion's share was $10,000, just under $10,000 for demolition costs. When the city was abandoned and neglected, the city ordered it demolished. That order was not satisfied, so we executed demolition and cleanup. Other than that, it was mostly just nuisance violations, grass, rubbish, and that sort of thing. And there was a very large number of administrative costs associated with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gibson?
Kay Gibson, City of Salisbury resident. I guess I just had some questions, is why we were doing this, because I thought when a property was purchased and deeded, the liens were dropped?
No, they have to be paid.
They have to be paid, but shouldn't they be paid by the seller, not the buyer? I thought that was the usual way it was done. Then I went through and I looked, and I looked at, the appraised value of the land was $10,900. The fire department paid $36,000 for the property. The appraisal was done, $1113. The closing was $610. Now, demolition costs the city money. Mowing costs the city money. The person's name on the bill, Els Delmarva Homes Incorporated. So they're the ones that owe the money, right? Now I'm wondering, they just made... Now I'm wondering, they just made, they sold a property for four times its value, now they're coming back, and they want $25,000 more benefits, that's another two times. So we're paying six times the appraised value. Now this is a private corporation. As a city taxpayer, hey, I paid for that demolition. I paid for that grass mowing. Hey, I paid for the administrative folks. Now, why am I going to give this company another two times the appraised value? We've already done four times. So that's my question. Why, this money is going not to the Delmar, not for the East Salisbury Fire Department, it's going, according to the bill, to Delmarva Homes Incorporated. Now, I'm not the brightest person, I'm not a lawyer, I don't understand all the legal ins and outs of the real estate stuff, don't claim to. That's I'm asking. Please explain it to the public as to why we're paying six times the appraised value for the piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mr. Stevenson.
Chief, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, I can tell you that the corporation was dissolved, so that, I'm not sure where Ms. Gibson is getting the information that we were paying the corporation, so perhaps the chief can help me with this.
And unfortunately, I made my presentation a couple of months ago, so you're going to have to go from a rusty memory, since I'm not fully briefed and prepared to speak.
And let me ask Mr. Council President Day, because this is not something that we normally do, that we decide we're going to answer this question, normally we would make contact with the...
Yeah, this does not have to be answered at all right now, but we would normally make contact through a letter. This is purely if the administration wishes to respond at this time. And I can even add what I recall from, and it's very simple, what I recall is very simple.
What I recall, and maybe we can validate each other's recollections, is that the Salisbury Fire Company Number Two purchased the property at tax sale. The Delmar Homes, who was the owner of record, the deed holder, the corporation is now defunct, it no longer exists. The corporation did not pay the $35,000 or whatever the number that Ms. Gibson said, while it may have been recorded, it may have included the liens and fees that we're talking about tonight. But that wasn't the sale of the property, was satisfied at a much lower rate. I think the number that Ms. Gibson quoted probably did include the $25,000 in fees. The, it was acquired at tax sale, the writing off of the fees is going to Fire Company Number Two, so that they will in turn donate the property back to the city for the purpose of building a fire station. So it's the city paying itself back, in my estimation, to get a piece of property from Fire Company Number Two. Is that your recollection?
And Chief, my recollection also was that there was a number, I think it was less than $10,000, so it was less than the appraised value, but it was paid to the debtor, or it was paid to the bank that owned the debt, it wasn't paid to...
There were several equity lien holders. Mr. Tillman may be able to speak and wax eloquently on it, I can't. But there was the original owner, which was Delmar Homes, and then there were, then it was, the property was acquired at tax sale, the money was forwarded, but the deed, no request for a deed was issued at that point in time. So now you have Delmar Homes as the deed holder, another corporation who is the equity holder of the piece of property, and both of those agencies had to be satisfied, and they took a considerable, considerably less amount to satisfy their needs to do that. I think it was in the neighborhood of about $3,000, but again, I'd have to really research it.
That fits my recollection as well.
Mr. Tillman, I don't know if you had anything else from your recollection to add.
Mine is a little rusty as well, but my recollection is that another corporation had purchased it at tax sale, and that purchase was then assigned to, you know, Fire Company Number Two. And so, but there were liens and judgments other than the cities that had to be satisfied in order to make this happen. So that's what was done.
We will, however, Mr. Day, Ms. Gibson is gesticulating wildly with the information from the internet. I will get that from her this evening and make sure that we get it over to the council's office to make sure that we have an explanation for her this week in writing.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, other questions for Chief Hoppus or for Mr. Stevenson? Hearing done. All those in favor of Resolution 2444, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, next on our agenda is ordinance Number 2301, this is for first reading. This is finally establishing the Small Business Preference Program for small business, veteran-owned, small business, and disabled veteran-owned, service-disabled veteran-owned businesses.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Mr. Tillman.
All right, ordinance Number 2301, the point of the ordinance is to add a subsection D entitled Small Business Preference Program to Section 2.32.050 of the code. The point of this is to basically mirror a provision or a program that the state already administers. And what they do in that case is that the state chooses which projects will be put out for bid to small businesses, and if they're deemed appropriate for that purpose, they're put out for that purpose, and then these small businesses or veteran-owned small businesses, along with the other, you know, proposals, come in, and this ordinance would allow the city, all other things being equal, to award the bid to one of, someone who qualifies as a small business, or a veteran-owned small business, or even a disabled veteran-owned small business. If that individual's, if they come under one of those three categories, their proposal could actually come in at 5%, 7%, or 8% higher than the next lowest, you know, bid, and they would get the job based on that preference. But this will not apply to every proposal that's put out there, only those where Mr. Cordry or his, you know, successor deems it appropriate that that's the way they should be put out. If you want, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Section 2.32.050 by adding a subsection D which establishes a small business, veteran-owned small business, and disabled veteran-owned small business preference in the award of city contracts, whereas the State of Maryland has enacted certain procurement preferences pursuant to the State Finance and Procurement Article Annotated Code of Maryland and Comar, and whereas the City of Salisbury has concluded that it is in the best interest of city residents to permit the use of procurement preferences for certain types of businesses located in Salisbury, Maryland, and whereas the City of Salisbury previously amended the City Charter Section SC 16-3 to allow preferences by the city in the evaluation of contracts for the construction of public works and the purchase of materials, services, and supplies for businesses that qualify to receive preferences and contracts with the State of Maryland, and whereas the City of Salisbury wishes to authorize the Director of Internal Services to begin utilizing certain procurement preferences in the competitive bidding process. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Section 2.32.050 of the City Code be amended by the addition of the following. Applicability, number one, the Small Business Preference Program applies to all competitive bidding conducted pursuant to this section by the city. Procedures, the Director of Internal Services shall screen all procurements potentially eligible for a small business preference, and shall determine which of those procurements is appropriate for preferences under this, under these procedures. The Director of Internal Services shall also determine which percentage preference is to be applied. The determination shall be based on the availability of qualified, certified small businesses and other appropriate factors. The proposed small business procurement preference may not exceed a base percentage preference of 5% of the total contract value. A 2% preference may be added to the base percentage preference for veteran-owned small businesses, and 3% preference may be added to the base percentage preference for disabled veteran-owned small businesses. Any solicitation for procurement designed for small business preference shall include a statement that the procurement has been so designated and shall indicate the price preference percentage to be applied to that procurement. Small business, businesses, excuse me, small business preferences shall apply only to those businesses which meet the definition of a small business, veteran-owned small business, or disabled veteran-owned small business, under the Maryland law and Comar. And in the case of the city's Small Business Preference Program, any small business, veteran-owned small business, or disabled veteran-owned small business must also have its principal place of business within the city limits of Salisbury, Maryland, or be at least 51% owned and controlled by an individual domiciled in Salisbury, Maryland. The Director of Internal Services shall maintain a list of all small businesses, veteran-owned small businesses, and disabled veteran-owned small businesses qualified under both state law and this code to be designated as such. It is the responsibility of the small business and not the Director of Internal Services to request that its name be included on the list. The Director will however verify whether each small business is qualified for inclusion on the list and demand whatever proof is required. If any business is found not qualified, the Director of Internal Services will notify the business and afford it an opportunity to appeal the Director's decision to the city. The city administrator, excuse me, the decision of the city administrator is final. Paragraph three directs solicitation, when soliciting bids for procurement designated for small business preference, the Director of Internal Services shall send a solicitation or notice of the solicitation to all certified small businesses on the list which are appropriate for the subject of the contract. Under paragraph four, evaluation, when a procurement preference under this section has been designated for a small business preference, the procurement officer shall accept the most favorable responsive bid from a responsible small business, if the biz, excuse me, if the bid does not exceed the favorable responsive bid price received from a responsible bidder that is not a certified small business by more than 5% or more than 7% for a veteran-owned small business, or more than 8% for a disabled veteran-owned small business. The predetermined percentage preference is the, also the, it can't exceed that amount, that's what that means there. And then I noticed that there is a typo in paragraph D2, D, where it says businesses plural, it should say small business preferences.
Line 49.
Yes, line 49. Or 48, I believe it is.
48.
On my copy. So the ES should be eliminated from the end of that word.
Mr. Heath.
One quick question, just that, the contracts could be, could include goods or services, correct?
Yes, let me see where, let's see. Yeah, those contracts could be put out basically to cover any of those things, correct?
Thank you. Two, two things. One, this also wouldn't limit the city's ability in any way to consider other qualifications other than price or other specifications.
No, if, when the bids went out, if there were no small businesses qualified in the mind of the procurement department or who was making the determination, they would eliminate them as potential bidders. It's only where they find them to meet the other qualifications as well.
And sometimes we make, you know, we make decisions based on, you know, other characteristics like proximity, obviously, this would, you know, this would only apply to cities within Salisbury, but, you know, we could, we could determine the best qualified as well as lowest-priced bidder on a variety of factors. But this, this being a price determinant only, it just, it wouldn't limit our ability to include other factors, right?
All other things being equal, then you could apply this price difference.
Right. And then the other question that I had is just one of practicality in terms of developing this list of qualified businesses. I think it would just be important for us after this to reach out through the Chamber of Commerce to, or through some other mechanism, that's the one that makes sense to me, to say, hey, here's an opportunity for local businesses.
Veterans organizations.
And veterans organizations as well.
And many of these people, to the extent that they might apply on the state level, will already be on the state's lists as qualified. So we should, I mean, the goal here was, Salisbury does not want to be in the business of making all these legal determinations to the extent that they don't have to.
Right.
So if we, if we can ride on the state's back on that issue, that's exactly what we're going to do.
Absolutely.
Question from Ms. Miller. I believe when you post RFPs, if someone is on the list, we're, when we put it out, most of the time it goes on the state list, so if they're already designated as a veteran-owned business or a small business, are they getting those notifications, or are the lists that they look at, were on there?
We post it on e-commerce marketplace.
Okay.
So if they are registered on e-commerce marketplace, then they would get it.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments?
Just a comment. For those who are veterans and are watching this evening, or no veterans, this is a great opportunity to get a jump on your business, if it's a new business, especially for those who are newly returning vets. Many folks come back from Iraq, Afghanistan, and other dry, dusty places and don't know what they're going to do with their lives. And this is an opportunity to get a little bit of an edge and prove yourself and become established. So get out there. And I would also say that those coming back from those places, consider joining a veterans' organization, something that can be locally an assistance to you. The VFW, the Legion, those are two, but there are many, many more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spees. And I'll entertain a motion, I don't know if this is...
No, I was just going to say, one other thing I just wanted to make clear was that these 5%, 7%, and 8%, those are the, you know, it's the maximum 5% that if it's determined that it should only be a 2% preference, that's permitted under this as well.
Okay. Thank you. We'll entertain a motion to edit line 48, paragraph D to remove ES.
Does it require, is it a significant typo, or is it just...
It's not.
...illustrated?
We've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion, a second.
It's 48 or 49, I'm not sure which one it is, it looks like a 49.
It's like 49, I think.
I thought it was 49. Okay, we've got a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anything else?
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
For those who fit into these categories, who have maybe not started that business you've been dreaming about, the Pitch Across Maryland, the startup bus, will be in Salisbury on the 15th, next Monday, so, you know, maybe you could start that business and then start to take advantage of some of this.
That's right.
Check with the Chamber of Commerce for more info.
All right. Anything else? And all those in favor of ordinance Number 2301 as amended, this is again for first reading, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. We have no other requests for public comment, and with that, we are adjourned for the evening.